We're getting it in.
Really?
That's what I've been doing.
Yeah, just. All right.
Shoot, I'm sorry to hear that. You holding up all right? A lockdown.
The clicker. Do I still have to do a little?
Yes, you are.
Thirty-four minutes to write.
No, I mean.
You listen, I hear that.
Very enough.
God.
Go ahead. I'll back out.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dayton Planning Commission to order at six oh one PM. In apartment education. Dear Lord Father, thank you for the beautiful day and the lovely weather. Thank you for the people of our town and the ability and opportunity to represent them. We need to speak with us this evening and guide our decisions, even as we're doing in every conversation session we have. We will go there with fortune with us. And just communicate with us as you always do. Maybe local?
Yeah, Ms. Resnick.
President.
Okay. Mr. Shiflett.
President.
Mr. Dijack.
Present.
And Mr. Swindle.
Oh, here.
And then Mr. Holland. Not here.
Are we skipping over?
Yes, we're skipping over council.
So the first item of business tonight, the planning commission is going to be the approval of minutes from our January eighteen meeting. Has everybody got a chance to review those? Any questions? So when we're visiting other than what's already been brought up? And I will.
The merge. No, I'm sorry. I'll second it then.
Who was first? Sorry.
Mr. Shiflett.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's packed. Next item on the agenda. For review, it's going to be the CIP. I will fill the room before I'm coming in here. Before the show. Right.
All right. Enjoy karaoke time.
Let's see if they'll still be cheering at the end. Well, this is, this is always an exciting time of year, the budget and CIP. But it's very important in the local government process. And we are focusing on the fiscal year twenty five. CIP, you have a spreadsheet in front of you that probably goes out for five years. That's typically. Is a planning tool. It lets. Current revenues, future revenues, and it helps us determine when we need those revenues five, ten years out. And that's basically all that slide says. What this slide says is what the legislature has required. Of the planning commission that the CIP comes before you for review and recommendation to council. I, I won't read that verbatim unless. I have to. Okay, we're not working. I guess I gotta get that way. And this is just some criteria. Tonight is when I present the CIP to the planning commission for your review and recommendation. Take action tonight at this official meeting or at the future meeting of March twenty first. Okay? Uh. Here you want to see all of the different expenses, but some significant. Of at least ten thousand dollars. And this is all tied to our, our, the comp plan that was approved in twenty twenty-two. Basically. Uh, the process is, you know, working with the department heads. Kind of come up with submissions and projects to include. We, we look at those, review those, we prioritize those. Uh, department heads, the manager, the treasurer, planning commission, town council. This is all a team effort. The check mark where it's being presented. For your recommendation and. Process. And then every year we start over again. It's a continual process. Okay. Here's the, your twenty twenty-two comp plan. The items in green. Have been completed or are ongoing. Verbatim almost from. Twenty-two comp plan. I think it's the last page of the plan. And I just highlighted what. We finding is. Ninety-eight percent complete downtown master plan is underway. Uh, so, uh, treatment plant's done. Vehicle replacement is ongoing, one per year. Um, and then the cameras are have, are in. Okay. So like I said, we're focusing on fiscal year. Twenty-five. That begins July one. So the first. First area is water and sewer, and these, these are the things that I'm recommending for funding. Well, number five, the water store. Which are essential. We don't really have to do them now, but it's in our best interest to do them now. Uh, well, and high service pump replacement, that's imperative. That's critical to today's services and what we provide today. It's imperative we keep that going. Otherwise, we will lose production, we lose supply, and that equates to dollars. Important. Um, so the just. Your water is big business for Dayton. It's major revenue that comes into the city. And, and we need to protect that. We need to protect, protect that future supply and capacity and quality. We also need to plan for future. Row or annex. In any kind of way strategically, there's a couple of new neighborhoods. We need to plan for those. After those are developed, I think the hope is that that will bring in some sort of commercial investment. Help diversify the city's. Income. Diversify our revenues. So. These are all. The water storage tank and well number five is going parallel as parallel projects, not one before the other, but running together. And they are a big dollar. And the thing we have. We can meet. We're, we're good with Cargill and our daily demand today. But what if Cargill does have a sustained increase in their production and demand more, more water? That's always a possibility. Haven't heard, you know, we have to think about this. Therefore, you see in fiscal year twenty-six, and I'm noting it because it's an estimated five million dollar project for this two point five million gallon. And, and it's, uh, and I'm saying we need to move forward on both of those essential projects because they are complex. The design and engineering is complex. The permitting is a complex process. And then of course, construction. Uh, the next item. Oops, let's go back one. Is that it? I went, I went ahead a lot. Streets. Dayton, Dayton's a little different than what I'm used to with streets. Uh, usually it's the town's responsibility to resurface and do everything with them. Here, that's a different story. Most of that. However, we do the daily. And snow plowing and. Repairs. So I'm, I'm keeping that. Ring over. That's in the budget there. For, for fiscal year twenty-five. Going maintenance, upkeep our streets, maintain that network. And as we go, we assess and decide what needs to be done. It's in the condition and do the repairs as appropriate. So we're, and, um. You know, there are new projects that are still in the CIP. I want to recognize those. Is our legacy. Married in, in, in there for a number of years. We are not forgetting about those. Uh, but at this time. Uh, I, I don't think we can move forward with funding some of those because of other needs. And there's other things that I think have to happen to comprehensively connect. Everything in Dayton to make it work together and be a unified. System. Bicycle pedestrian facilities. To consolidate and, and carry over what's left. This is important. Before it allows for those legacy projects. I think we need to look at with, with sidewalks, with pedestrian greenways. Streets. Buggies and horses, bicycles, all of that, all of those things have to work together. Just kind of randomly doing disparate sections of it and hoping one day they all connect and work together. It's, it's kind of hit or miss. We don't know what we're gonna get. So I think we need to really seriously look. And this allows us to take into consideration future developments. So if a developer comes in and wants to put in a little subdivision, we know a greenway is going through that area. We can negotiate an easement on the front end with him and allow that to connect as we grow. Uh, it also allows connections from the downtown to other. More. Remote or other areas of the town, neighborhoods, commercial areas. In that, that plan. Um, so that's, that's where I see that funding. Parks and public facilities. Again, some consolidation of those, but I think the downtown master plan, which will. Be underway. We met with the consultant remotely just the other day to get that process started. Uh, I think that will give us a lot of guidance and define a few implementation strategies. As to what we have to do and how we go about approaching. These, these items, and it could also kind of rank and give us. So. In, in the immediate. Time though, for fiscal year twenty-five, I do see improving existing facilities, two specifically would be Dove Park and the town. And improvements in, in other areas of that nature, parks or other facilities that. Existing amenities is important. We have to have those in the best shape we can before we start. Any amenities. Care of what we have now with the funding we have, how we'll be able to take care of future and new items. So we have to get, get the house in order first, and then we can start looking. Items, and I think coming up with some sort of. Master plan, some sort of plan for those things, bigger picture. Uh, we can set priorities. We know where we're going. It's like just hopping in the car and driving or planning out a trip or whatever. Public works. Funding. Year twenty-six, uh, from twenty-five. Important, the. People, those. Those, we should wait if there's funding enough, if, if we can. Try to. Do a little more, but it's not really necessary, but they will probably in all likelihood. For years. Uh, so. They're essential imperative is just essential. We. Without those that provide services, otherwise we'll, we won't be able to provide, we'll, we'll disrupt the service, we'll disrupt schedules. And. And recapture some funding by, by resale or trade in. Unity development. I think the, uh, the completion of the mass. Will play a big part. What comes into the CIP in this area. We've already met with the consultant to get that process. Capturing that fifty thousand from DHCD and the grant. So I think, uh, in looking at Dayton, its character. Here, we want to preserve that. That's what this master plan is about. Projects they outline. I think are, are going to. Kind of enhance what's here and any future development. Quality of life, and it has the potential with investment and. Through the years of increasing property values and sales revenues. And, and again, this all ties. Walks and the greenways and everything else. At, in and around the town of Dayton. Police. We're looking at another vehicle. Um, seventy-one, seven hundred impair. Don't think we want to blacken law enforcement. Falls in with the schedule, one a year. Uh, and probably that's just going to continue out. The thing that I've looked at in this, I really tried to work with real numbers, estimates that we've staff has obtained. Looking at inflation, if you look at the vehicle line, you'll see it increases five percent progressively through the years. Uh, so all of those things are taken into consideration when coming in with the CIP. So they're as real as we can get, uh, the numbers. The total. Is one point three. One four seven hundred. That's a big number, and I put it in big green.
It's not red.
I don't want, ever want to. Numbers up there. We don't want red numbers. But anyway. Kind of tie it all together. You know, we're, we're operating on a reserve approach. That we have funds when they're available and, and that we don't have any kind of spikes in funding needs. So we know what we need now. We know what we need in the future. I think it's also necessary. As CIP. To maintain and increase. Just knowing we have a five million dollar project coming up, uh, during the budget process that has to be considered. Uh, because we have to have a balanced budget. The future, uh, water storage tank, as I indicated, you'll see it in. Twenty-six to begin construction. Uh, don't know if that's possible, but that's where I feel like it needs to be in the CIP. Uh, now if you're. Budget, you'll see that it's, it's. That increase of four hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Over last. But if you look. The well number five mini plant and water storage tank total six hundred thousand dollars. By themselves. So if you're taking last year's CIP and this year's. The CIP really hasn't increased. It's basically maintained. But the addition of those two critical projects have jumped it up. So I, I've taken a conservative approach, knowing that we need those. And we have to construct and design both of them, and that's in future year. We're also utilizing excess revenues. Carry over for these projects, like some street, the street money, parks and rec money, different monies are carried over to help fund. So year twenty-five's projects, we're not reallocating them to other areas. We're carrying them over so we could maintain those operations. The twenty-two comprehensive plan update. Here. All of the orange. Is what this CIP addresses. And all of that. One of the first slides. Still have the green on there. So hopefully next year. All of that orange becomes green because we're making progress in some way towards those projects. Next. Uh, after this, we, we kind of try to finalize. On the twenty-first. Uh, then April eighth is when we have the public hearing for the CIP and proposed budget to town council. On May thirteenth. We'll have. Present to council for approval, and then our fiscal year begins July one. Twenty-four for fiscal year twenty-five. That's my show for tonight.
Worth the price of admission.
No song and dance.
Location for that tank yet, or is that still blue?
We have the property.
Yeah.
Property was purchased this fiscal year. Uh, what's, it's the, uh, what's the property now? The, the family name? Shank, the Shank, yeah.
Go past like hair grow and all that and his driveway entrance will be on the right. Purchase finalized, we have seen everything.
Yeah.
So I don't want to sit on property. We bought it for a reason. That reason is in there. It would probably be. Months is my guess. Now, if that's if we don't have COVID and supply chain issues and all that other stuff that we've dealt with over the last. Several years that we're still in some ways dealing with. But that's, that's typically, I'd say. Twelve, eighteen months. It could be a little longer because of the nature of the project.
Couple more questions. Oh, the mowers. Did we get two bench rack mowers or just the one?
Jennifer?
Uh, I want to say last year you did get two.
Okay.
Yeah, we currently, um. Our fleet is in pretty good shape. We have a super old Nevada that's kind of under commission right now. Um, ideally use something like a zero return or kind of a front end, something a little more memorable than the.
Except for my sidewalk, I want my sidewalk. Every meeting I gotta say that.
And I did write that. I actually wrote that on my notes.
You're saying there's a chance.
It's written in, in blue.
Yeah, I could say, Wes, yeah, good old Wessey there.
Has there been any issue with vehicle replacement getting implemented in vehicles at all in general?
There's been delays. Yes. It's law enforcement, it's fire EMS, it's any of those vehicles. They, there's all.
Carried out.
Typically, we do not stray from our plan of replacing one vehicle every year. A little longer, a year or so if we had to, but I wouldn't want to get behind any further. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we would carry that over. I wouldn't take it out and reallocate that. I'd carry that over and we'd have, we'd just get to the next year if we had to do that.
So, yeah, no, this is a. Nice wish list. But no, that's good. I, I did want to thank you, Brandon and, and staff for putting this together. I think this is good. I could see there's a lot of hands that went into this, uh.
There, there were a lot of hands and staff was a, a, a big help. I didn't hot. Do this all alone. Sure. I have, uh, emailed Shaylan, is that her name? And, and said I'd love to meet with her and get that on the calendar, but we've never coordinated that, and that would be some of the discussion. Some beautification, the mural that's been discussed. What are they looking at as far as future production? I know they're kind of landlocked for expansion, but they can, could do some efficiency and design things in their manufacturing process that could allow them to increase product. Yeah.
That's a, yeah, I think that's a good point too. I, excited for this is a Jennifer was well aware there, I guess for their pandemic too, when we saw the spikes when they went to six day. Production schedule and. Yeah, how much water were we purchasing for the? Right. 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 That's good.
Yeah, but the new plant. A lot more than you ever.
No, that's fantastic.
In designing that, I mean, I, I think it would be prudent to consider any. Any, uh, is there? Any need to go a little larger or if the requirements, I know there's a certain benchmark that if you go above, it's. Kind of puts you in another bracket and there's all these other things. It's the same with sewers, so. Uh, but you know, we need to think about that. Yeah, because I've been in a, in a county where, um. They have no more capacity. It's not, uh. Not good. As a water or a sewer plant is, I mean, a sewer plant is a ten-year process to plan and build, so. We don't have to worry about that.
No, that's fair. So I guess maybe Brandon and Jennifer can kind of walk us through, because I, I don't know, the plant commission's been as, uh, privy to all the discussions on the new mini plant, uh, as well as the, the well five, uh, discussion. So you just walk us through kind of a, you know. So you said parallel and combination, and then we're looking at designing in FY twenty-five. Um, and then. Construction did, uh, down the line.
I'll give the karaoke mic to Jennifer.
That's, yeah. Oh, wait, do we need to get on Zoom?
Um, okay, so I feel like you kind of were asking two things, so I'll address the well and mini plant first. Um, so for FY twenty-five, I did, um. I discussed with Russell, our engineer from the water treatment plant, um, and also a company that actually does the surveying and stuff, kind of. How to even approach that, what our next steps would be. Um, for a while there, we were working with moonshot missions, which was a free service. Um. They were going off of old studies that we had and locations picked out in the old study. I want to say it was from two thousand and seven. Um, which was helpful, and they designed a presentation and kind of justifications for us, but. Um. Forget the company's name. I want to say ECS or something like that, but they would actually phase one. Um, they would come out, review the existing survey that we had. Um, they would do electrical resistivity surveying. Um, they would eventually help us select, um, a site for target drilling. Um, and they would work with VDH with us. So that would be. Phase one, kind of selecting the location and getting the permitting and everything. Um. That they estimated, uh, they were able to give me real numbers. So they estimated about twenty-five thousand for that phase. Um, phase two would actually be the well installation, testing and reporting. Um. That entails, you know, well-designed, um, test drilling, well-logging, the aquifer pumping, um, and then generating their report. That was estimated, um, two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars to four hundred seven. Four hundred seven thousand, five hundred dollars and really. Four hundred seven thousand five hundred dollars and really. That's based on the size of the well that we find. Um, like the counties was towards the larger side because their well was massive. Um, so that would be everything. For F Y twenty-five, at least starting phase one, um, as far as getting a well and then. The idea of the mini plant was if we could find a location, um. The location we were considering and looking at was kind of behind Cargill in the farmer's field there. Um, if it's somewhere over there, it doesn't really make sense to pipe it all the way to our current plant. Um, so if you do a mini plant and send it directly to the tank that we're building, it would. Be more cost-effective and make more sense. Um, and then your questions regarding the storage tank. What was that again that you wanted me to address?
I know, just to, just to walk through, just real quickly there, just, uh, just for plant commission's benefit, too, because I know we've had discussion and I think kind of. Part of it, I think you're, Aaron had asked, uh, earlier, but just to kind of walk us through that, that timeline, too, and what that would entail now that we have the land.
Okay, yeah, so since we have the land, Russell is currently, um, which will be completed this fiscal year, working on, um, a letter to V D H. Um. V D H agreed to kind of do a, a short letter without like the hydraulic study and everything, so that would actually come later in the process. But would save us a lot of time as far as getting approval. Um, so then for F Y twenty-five, that would be mostly the engineering and designing costs. Um, which were estimated about three hundred and fifty thousand-ish. Um, so once all that's done, um, Russell did suggest kind of the tank construction. And then the water lines would probably make sense to go as two separate bids and then kind of correlate because. You're going to have your tank people that are really good with that and then your, your, you know, water line people. Um, but yeah, if we could get construction going in F Y twenty-six, that would be awesome. Um, but yeah, for F Y twenty-five, kind of focusing on designing, planning and getting that ready to go into the next phase. Um, and I guess I'll elaborate on that, too. Um, we have a quote for the two and a half million gallon storage tank. Um, I mentioned the engineering costs. Um, construction estimate was around four point one million for just that. Um, and then construction contingency at a ten percent rate was four hundred and ten thousand. And that gives you your kind of total of around the five million mark. Does that answer all your questions? Any other questions? All right.
The funding that's available, how much would that really? Give you an idea how much that would actually help. So I would have.
No, you're good. Um, so are we talking? Tank or the well? Um, that I don't actually have exact numbers on. I'd have to kind of start running through that. Um, and then he did mention for the, um. And I talked to our, um, V D H rep for the well that V D H also would have. Some funding to help us with at least the testing process.
All right, so I guess. Next question. Now, I know we've, uh, we've increased from last year, but I know the other thing we're, we're looking at is trying to. Get some, uh, firm numbers, which I see we're, we're kind of filled in a lot of the blanks for out years, or I guess the next, you know, four years beyond F Y twenty-five. Which will be key.
Yeah, I think some of this effort in the downtown master plan and other things will fill out some of those future numbers. They're not all filled out and that's in every C I P. You'll never, you know, it. We do the best we can and I think as time goes on, we'll be adding to that and trying to get numbers in all of those areas. And in, in Jennifer's case, in water, I'd like a separate kind of internal projection of maybe even ten years out. Just to, because those are bigger expenses, so just knowing what comes up and. Replacement schedules for equipment is something important that we can build into the C I P and. Just like we do for mowers and police cars and all that other stuff, so. Getting all that is just a matter of, uh, housekeeping and time and. And planning effort.
Absolutely. Right, that's, that's fair. And just to confirm, too, the other two quick things, the, in the past, we've, uh, just for confirmation, we've. Carried over for, uh, kind of a routine maintenance update. So for instance, the sidewalk replacement, we've had that. You know, an- annually and then, uh, likewise, we've had the water and sewer line replacement, just their, our existing replacement. And those are continuing on.
Correct.
Annually, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. Dayton, Dayton is, uh. It, it's a smaller elephant than what I've dealt with in the past, but it's still an elephant, so we'll eat it one bite at a time.
So there you go, Eric. To that point, there you go. Well, we'll replace some sidewalks first.
Water lines.
You're not the only town that has to do that. Some are in worse shape than you. But I think it's a realistic plan. I mean, the big increase is the. Many, the well five, the mini plant and the storage tank. If you take that out. You're kind of floating along around what the C I P was last year. So we're kind of maintaining that even for now, uh, kind of. Trying to wait and see on some other developments that are on the books to happen and. See where things are going and where we stand.
Last question I had was just, just again, more for adification in this case, in case anyone's tuned in or wants. Uh, but, uh, Brian, if you and maybe Krista could just chime in, I just don't, I, because we're looking at, you know, I know it's a large lot to kind of look at. But, and I know traditionally the town has, you know, we've kind of done cash and carry, you know, we've, we've carried the, you know, paid for it as we go. Uh, but we have, I guess maybe we could just talk about some of these projects would involve either partnerships, like for instance, some of the potential. Uh, you know, transportation improvements, we're looking at V dot. I know, for instance, you know, police vehicles, sometimes we're, you know, just able to get, get the, uh, you know, U S D A grants. Uh, for instance, we've talked about like with V D H and V R A mentioned, I just, if you could just briefly, just. For everyone's benefit, talk about those funding and financing options that might be new to what we've done in the past.
What, what you'll see is there's no grant revenue accounted for. These are dollars. Grants are all reimbursement. I'm not going to count on them because, just because we apply doesn't mean we're going to get. So I'm planning worst-case scenario. Now with the, the water storage tank, I think there's some state funding options that we can tap into help. We can also fund by bond, uh, different ways to do that. So I think we need to explore all of those when we're actually at that stage for construction. Um, and look at the best one. Um, having no debt is great and wonderful to operate that way, but. Having some that's manageable and, and planned and controlled is a good thing. Because it, it helps your, your ratings, your, your bond ratings and your interest rate. So I, I would think because there's no established debt, uh. The first time might be. Would like. That's usually the way it works, but, but all of those in combination, I think we have to look at them because we may have to. Uh, layer that financing, the different options on, on top of one another. And if we can. If we had time or we decide to, you can always build cash reserves. Allocate money for a specific project. So that when you go to build it, you have cash to put down and you don't have to finance as much. It's just what, what. The town is comfortable, what council is comfortable with. And what we can afford.
Right.
Just a little.
You guys still have the swear jar and.
They're all having a big party because of that. It's, it's, it's no matter what size town, they all, or city or whatever, you always have the same. Uh, issues and constraints. Uh, when you, when, when the manager goes to balance the budget, there's never enough to go around. And you have to have priorities and needs versus wants spelled out. And that's where I rely on staff to kind of help guide me. I, I know enough about water or. Police and their needs to be dangerous, but they're the experts and I'm going to rely on them and they've been all the big help in this whole process. It wouldn't, you wouldn't be seeing what you got today if, if I didn't have their help.
Thank you. We got a great team here.
And I, I changed it up on them, but they were good sports about it.
That's good. Well, I, I appreciate the, that's, I just want to make that just so everyone knew, we had various funding options and, and I think that's key. Because I know in finance, coming from, I know, you know, Brian and Krista and, uh, talked about, uh, exploring some of those different options, yeah.
Do you have any to add to the financing?
And I think that, that, she's absolutely right and, and I guess. Right. Yeah, I know, boy, Jennifer just wants more ribbon cuttings there, you know. Came the interest story, right? We're like, oh, yeah, let's. Yeah, right. Well, that's good. And, and that's, that's a key point, too. It just, we've got, I think it's for benefit of, you know. When we're talking to the residents, too, you know, right, some of these projects, while they're accounted for, you know, there are different options. So it's not as strictly, you know, coming in straight cash, as you, I think Brian and Krista do, and here a lot of these are, some couldn't be grant funded. And some we may just say, hey, because we don't get the financing right, then, you know, we can defer. Uh, but I think it's key because, you know, originally the water treatment plant expansion was going to be, uh, a V D H loan. Um, you know, low interest loan, uh, but then when ARPA funds came, that's what came in, that's why we have no debt. But we were willing to take that out at that time, so that is an option for, you know, for this project and, and, you know, I mean. That's, that's helpful because we, you know, we don't even have to necessarily go out on the private market, so.
And this is a plan. It's not written in stone. Opportunities. That too is, is going to become a team effort.
I think everyone's kind of taking the turn on for this project, yeah.
But, but this is a plan. There's, you know, there's flexibility to move things around if opportunities come up and. One thing isn't progressing and we know it won't be funded, we could shift to something else that's in the plan. So we do have other options for that, but we don't want to just. Do something that, you know, feels good. We want it to really be meaningful and. Address a need and not a want. Uh, so those, those are important things to consider if you're moving that around.
Awesome. Does anyone have any further questions? All right, thank you so much for all that information.
Thank you.
Are we? Prepared to make a decision? We want to think on it and then meet back for next week, I think is the best decision.
When are we coming back here?
Uh, March twenty-first is our next meeting. I believe, um, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. Perfect, okay.
I think that's, I think it's prudent that way. We've got, everyone's got time to digest and we can, uh, have public comment that time, make, make adjustments, so.
I agree.
And if anyone has any questions in the meantime, uh.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business to discuss?
We've got our work cut out for us on the twenty-first, is that right, Maggie?
Yeah, yeah.
Any new business to discuss?
So, yeah, I did want to go over that March twenty-first meeting real quick because there's a lot going on at that meeting. Um, so what we would like to do is to have a joint meeting with town council. And the reason we want to do that is that staff has been working with the Community and Economic Development Committee on a few new policies. Um, we're looking at a new special event policy and a food truck policy. Um, as part of the food truck policy, it will also require a temporary use permit. And the temporary use permit has to go through planning commission. The other two are for council, but the temporary use permit would have to go through planning commission. In addition, um, because we would be, um, amending the zoning ordinance, we would have to require a public hearing. So we still have to fine tune a few things with the town attorney on exactly what that meeting is going to look like and how it's going to run. But those are the three things that we're going to want to take a look at, at that meeting, in addition to making a recommendation on the C I P. That meeting. Yeah, a lot going on, but we'll try to get out, um, materials well in advance to you guys, um. Just so you can take a look at that.
That meeting will still be at six?
Yes.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Megan, for, yeah, a lot of work going, uh, going on behind the scenes there and. And then I guess, and then that, I just got very took, because we're, I know, uh. We're, we're, uh, at the moment going to, uh, put the, uh, landscaping and subdivision.
Yeah, thank you.
And back in May, April or May.
Yeah, that'll probably come up again in April, May, just so that we can get the food truck and special event policies and then approved. Kind of in conjunction with the whole budget process. It'll just make things smoother.
Which, which makes sense. I think, yeah, would we, staff brought that up, but we thought, well, that, that's more pressing than.
But you do think we'll have some of that information prior to that meeting?
Yes, yeah, and, um, if you guys are interested, um, the Community and Economic Development Committee is also going to have like a public meeting. Technically, all of the meetings are public, but we're really going to try to push this one. It's like a public meeting. So that people can come in and ask the committee any questions about the new policies, so that they can get familiar with it before it goes to council and. Yeah, so that no one's surprised.
Do you have a date and time on that?
Yes, uh, March, is it March sixth?
Yes, March sixth and what do we say, five thirty, right?
Yeah.
An increase of fees on something, I can't remember what it is now. It might have been new, maybe.
I probably, yeah, that sounds like something I'd say. So that's something we're going to take a look at in the budget process, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
There will definitely be recommendations for increasing some fees.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure when those will be brought.
There is an annual three percent water increase that happens every year that council. Initiated, I think, what, last year? So that will be one of them for sure.
We split that, what did we do? We did what, summer rates or something? Yeah, that's what Charles. I'm old, that's the stuff, just.
Thank you, Maggie. Um, any public comment in this evening?
Bob, you're, you're the part of the peanut gallery, you're not gonna.
All right, um, with no further business to discuss, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
I'll, I'll let him do the first, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned. All opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.